If you promise me you don't violate these rights, then I mean the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Okay, please start with our roll call.
Council President print.
Here.
Council Member Perez.
Here.
Council Member Ben.
Here.
Council Member Albertson. Member McGinn. Council Member Howard.
Here.
And Council Member McCurvin.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we're gonna start off with the administrative report.
Join us tomorrow, June 4th, from 3 to 7 p.m. as we kick off our 2013 Renton Farmers Market. Tomorrow will be the first of 17 market days this summer called Rain or Shine in downtown Renton's Piazza Park, where three parks available in our city center will burn your garage. Enjoy over 70 vendors selling Washington grown fruits and vegetables, honey, handcrafted meats and cheeses, baked goods, beautiful bouquets, unique crabs, and much more. More information can be found at www.rentonfarmersmarket.com and on our website and socials. The 9th Annual Renton Career Fair sponsored by the City of Renton, Renton Technical College, Renton Chamber of Commerce, and Puget Sound. We'll be on Wednesday, June 5th, from 3 to 6 p.m. at Renton Technical College Cafeteria. Connect with over 60 employers in business, childcare, construction, healthcare, manufacturing, and other fields. Admission and parking are free. Also on June 5th, join us for the Community Safety Forum on Wednesday at 6:30 p.m. at Carco Theater located right next to the Renton Community Center. This solutions-based discussion will include representatives from the King County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, Superior Court, Renton School District, and Project B Free. Participants will be able to submit questions and ideas concerning crime and safety in Renton to the panel for discussion. The Parks and Recreation Department is currently hiring seasonal employees for various locations, including the Henry Moses Aquatic Center, Maplewood Golf Course, Renton Community Center, Highlands Neighborhood Center, and City Parks. Minimum age requirements are 15 for lifecards and 16 to 18 for all other positions. Applications are reviewed as received, and for a listing of open seasonal positions and additional details, visit our website, rentonwa.gov/career. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found on our website. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That's all, sir.
All right, thank you. We're gonna move on now to audience comment. We do have a number of people signed up. I'd like to remind everyone that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. If you request a response, please provide your name, address, and email address also. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. When you head up to the podium, please state your name, city of residence. There's a timer right in front. When you see the timer turning to yellow, please wrap up your comments. We're gonna start off tonight with Tom Anderson.
Mayor, Council. Another week gone by. Just wanna talk a little bit about, I'm sure you probably don't know, but we had a meeting with Martin and with Alex up in the transportation department. And it was a good meeting. He listened to all my concerns, our concerns, my son Derek and one of my employees, Mike, was there too. And we had a good meeting. So we're gonna put together a proposal. Hopefully, there's gonna be some wiggle room to help with the building. It seems that everybody thinks that we got such a great deal on that building because it was in a state of disrepair, but that's just part of it. It's landlocked, basically. It's in the security area, so we can never receive the public. Plus, we don't have any hard lines. We're all, internet is all done wireless in there. So there's a lot of other reasons that we were given that building at a reduced rate. But I just wanted to let you know that we had that meeting, and it was good, and we're gonna come together with a proposal. And so there's good energy. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Sergio Nunez.
Hello, Sergio. I live here in Renton, Norfolk. And then I was gonna say thank you for listening to us for this seven, eight times. For sure, they know us already. And thank you for listening to my boss. You know who is the one ready making things happen for all of us and support. The support is the more important thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Sophia Farrett.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and Councils. My name is Sophia Farrett. I'm an employee of the Landing Gear Works. I'm here to thank you. Thank you for the opportunity that you gave my boss, Tom, to meet with the lawyers, and thank you for listening to the proposal. I'm very thankful and grateful, and I still have faith in you. I still have faith that you guys somehow will come and help us with this, what's going on. And I'm just here to say thank you. Appreciate it.
You. Next up is Mary Popwell.
Hello, Council. My name is Mary Popwell. I am a resident of Shadowhawk 1 Community in Renton. I also reside on the HOA Board. I'm here with my two other board members and to speak about the homeless encampment that is at the Cedar River Park behind our community. We have, over the last probably two years, communicated with the Renton Police Department, with the Fire Department, trying to secure our easement property that is adjacent to our lot. The easement property is for Bonneville Power Association, which is our federal power grid, which is what the homeless encampment trespassers are utilizing to get to the Cedar River City property. We have incurred numerous amounts of vandalism, city, not city, but dumping on the grounds, vandalism to our newly installed Miami Gate, which was donated to us by the Bonneville Power Association. And this is, within the past six months, we've spent $25,000 doing what the Renton Police Department has recommended that we do. The continued vandalism is not just by the homeless encampment, it's by the Renton Fire Department or the regional, Renton Regional Fire Authority, who are trying to gain access to the encampment via the easement. They recently disassembled and made the Miami Gate not functional, which now we have to repair and either repair or replace at our expense. This doesn't seem fair. This doesn't seem fair at all. So we'd like to engage the City Council with how we can make this better.
All right, thank you. Next up is Monica Brown.
Evening, Council. I'm Monica Brown. I'm a resident of Renton, I live in Renton, and I also reside at Shadowhawk as well. So Mary actually did a really lovely job of articulating the concern. But I will say, personally and just from talking to our neighbors, we do have a real safety concern and a health concern in the area. The fires that are taking place down in that neighborhood are very scary. They seem to be ongoing. They seem to be happening every year, especially during the summertime when it's already hot and the ground is very dry. And it's terrifying to see fires taking place so close to our homes. I will also share the crime. There's a lot going on down there. Me personally, I had a stray bullet come through my home on New Year's Day. I was asleep at home, and you know, all of a sudden, I hear a noise, and there's a bullet coming through my home. And when I spoke to the police officer who came out, the belief was that it likely came from that area that we're continuing to see issues with. So again, my colleague Mary did a beautiful job of explaining the details of what's going on. But I really do ask sincerely that this council give us some support in cleaning up that encampment, removing it, because without the removal, we're just gonna continue to see the same issues that we have year over year. So, thank you so much. I appreciate the time to speak today. I hope you have a nice evening.
Thank you. So, next up is Diane Dobson.
Evening, Council. Diane Dobson, CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce. And as this matter that I come to you tonight for is of importance and timely, and I'm here on behalf of hundreds of businesses in our community who have asked the Chamber for advocacy and support, I would prematurely ask for grace on an extension of time bringing two items forward for council awareness.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
Move to grant additional minutes, given what was just said.
It's been moved and seconded. So will three additional minutes be fine? Okay.
Very much.
Set the timer twice. Okay. Oh, I need to vote. You're right. This is a little bit out of, a little out of the ordinary. So we have a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Is this just for this particular individual? Is it for?
She's asking for it. She's asking for it, for her.
Okay, and we're giving two additional minutes, you said?
I think she asked for three, yeah. Any other questions or concerns? Okay. On any other discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council. So I'm Diane Dobson, CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, coming forward tonight to speak to you on Initiative 2302. You've continued to hear from business owners the true and actual impacts that are causing our businesses to close their doors, business owners to sell their businesses, and other potential new businesses choosing to avoid Renton altogether. I'm not here tonight to speak to those rising costs, loss of entry-level jobs, or businesses leaving. I'm here specifically to request the City of Renton Council to refer this matter back to the city administration for one, potential alternative legislation that makes sense for our Renton business community, and/or two, review of potential litigation and lawsuit with King County, specifically the King County Elections Divisions due to two major flaws in the electoral process. These two flaws are: One, failure to timely include the initiative in the elections materials provided to the general public. The acknowledgment of receipt dated December 11th from King County Director of Elections Julie Wise clearly states, "For the February special election, all ballot measures are automatically included in the local voter's pamphlet." The King County proof for local voter's pamphlet received from King County, as well as the ballot, would further reiterate the expectation of process, including the verbiage of, "The complete text of this measure is available at the Elections Office or online at kingcounty.gov/elections." King County Elections did not send out a separate voter's pamphlet other than the insert which was included in the ballot sent, and instead leaned into the publication of the initiative through the King County Elections website. Certified copy of Resolution Number 4516 was sent to King County in its totality of 12 pages. However, King County Elections made the admitted error of uploading only the first four pages of the resolution, which included the following: Section 1, calling for the election; Section 2, listing the ballot title; Section 3, directing our clerk to file a copy of the resolution with King County Elections; Section 4, identifying the pro and con committee; and Section 5, including the explanatory statement, which is only one page double-spaced. Only those first four pages of the resolution, as identified, were included online at the King County Elections, and omitted entirely was Exhibit A, which included the entire minutia details and regulatory requirements of the initiative itself. It was expressed to administration and independent council members by attendees of the May 20th council meeting that were here for reasons other than that night, other than this initiative, that they had voted for the initiative, but had they been aware of the entirety of the initiative, they would have voted differently. We've continued to hear this from other members of the general public. The second flaw and cause for request for litigation is two, an actual insufficient number of signatures included on the petition submitted. RCW 35.21.005 Subsection 1D indicates, "In this title petitions are required to be signed and filed. The following rules shall govern the sufficiency thereof: numbered lines for signatures with space provided beside each signature of the name and address of the signer and the date of signing." RCW 3521.005-8 furthers, "Signatures followed by a date of signing which is more than six months prior to the date of filing the petition shall be stricken." On September 18th, 2024, King County Elections Representative Jacob Lodge agreed with the RCW as written that undated expired signatures do not count. Any signatures that were undated and expired would be pre-challenged, meaning they would have been excluded before even started the verification process. Approximately 3,242 signatures would have likely been disqualified for being undated or expired. However, two weeks later, communication was received from King County Elections stating, "We were contacted on September 18th by council representing the Raise the Wage Rent and Petition proponents for Initiative Measure 2302 regarding the exclusion of undated signatures and whether there are circumstances where they should be considered valid." King County Elections, this is continuing King County Elections' letter. "King County Elections prides itself on providing every opportunity to illustrate our commitment to providing an accurate and equitable service to the voters of King County, and we welcome opportunities to reconsider ways that will most accurately illustrate a voter's intent. I point out to council, nowhere in the RCW nor experienced case law does it provide opportunity for King County Elections to apply their discernment to reconsider ways that will most accurately illustrate a voter's intent. This was a step contrary to the RCWs, which are the laws which govern the way we live and work in Washington State. In consideration of the two failures of performance of King County Elections Division, on behalf of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, I hereby make request to the Renton City Council to refer this matter to the city administration and to the city attorney to challenge the certificate of sufficiency as issued on November 20th, 2023, certifying the signatures to be sufficient as required by RCW 35.21.005, and to pursue litigation for a dereliction of duties pursuant to the powers granted to them under Washington Appellate Code 434379009 the powers granted by the Office of the Secretary of State." Thank you for the time, and I thank you for the grace in providing the additional time.
Thank you. Next up is Melinda Lawrence.
Hello, Melinda Lawrence of Renton. I am here to speak about Initiative 2302, which Diane Dobson was just speaking about. I own the Whistlestop Bale House in Renton, and I've been here for 29 years. And I have a few things to add. I know that my colleague Lydia from the Berliner spoke last week, so I won't reiterate the things that she said because that would be redundant. However, I will highlight three things that she said that are of value. One, as a restaurant owner, my service staff does make well above minimum wage. And I'm still dumbfounded by the fact that this state doesn't allow a different wage set for service workers. Many states in this country do, as long as we can prove that our servers make more than minimum wage when including their tips, which we can. The other part that she brought up was that post-COVID inflation and business is drastically different than it was before. Sales aren't the same. Inflation has eaten into all profits we used to make. And at the same time that inflation is happening, the state is also increasing our minimum wage. And so all of those things, and including payroll taxes and all of the other payroll inclusions that we have, have just shipped more and more away at our income, so that it makes it more and more difficult for us to increase wages based on performance or just on other members of our staff. Kitchen being the main one. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that even after 29 years, I too am looking at moving my business or possibly selling, which is heartbreaking. So I'll add a couple other things. I'm not really sure how this happened. Renton is a great place to do business. It's a great place to raise families. We actually have a higher-than-average wage. The City of Renton actually pays higher-than-average wages for its employees. Other businesses, it's easy to just look online, Boeing, Pacar, IKEA, PetSmart, Target, Lumicor, Valley Medical Center, all pay higher-than-average wages. Higher-than-average wages from Tuculpa, Sea-Tac, and some areas of Seattle. I personally don't have a labor problem. My employees are my family. They've been with me for five, 10, 20 years. I've been at births of my manager's children. We take care of our employees. The City of Renton takes care of its employees. This thing came out of somewhere else, not in our area, not for what we need. It will cause me to have to cut hours, make layoffs. I've already frozen all of my essential or my management staff's wages to foresee what's coming. I do have a question that probably can't be answered today, but I'm curious about the cost of implementation for the city, how that's gonna be covered, if it's gonna be coming out of more business taxes on my end, payroll taxes, things like that. With inflation and things of that nature, our prices have already been raised so much. Lydia pointed this out last, or two weeks ago. Clients complain every day about our prices. And that's hard, because we wanna provide a space for families to come. We want it to be comfortable for them, and we want them to be able to come multiple times a week or however many times that they feel they can afford. And we've definitely seen a change in how people are spending and how often they come in the restaurant. The other thing that disturbs me about this is the initiative comes with a provision regarding who I-
I'm sorry, I need your, your time's up. I need you to wrap up your last thought here.
I guess I just wanna say, I think this is a Band-Aid to a much larger problem, and I don't think that it was well thought of or well executed. And I think the people of Renton deserve more, and these small businesses that work so hard to provide jobs for our community deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Kristy Daly.
Good evening. My name's Christine Daly. I am the General Manager at one of our rocks here in Washington State, the one in Renton at the Landing. This was a last-minute thing, so I don't have a lot on the plate here. I was too busy cutting employees so that my labor would stay down because of the minimum wage. So jumping the minimum wage up so fast, so soon, is going to hurt our small businesses. Coming from 20 years of this restaurant industry, personally, I worked my way up the ranks to the General Manager. Now, instead of being a conductor to a band, making sure everything's going with a flow, I'm sitting at a desk, looking at schedules, seeing if I can cut one cook, if I can work a Friday night on the line instead of mingling with the guests. It's very disheartening that I went into this business to make people happy and come in and have great service, have a good time. They can eat at home. They can have a pizza delivered to them. But instead, they come to the Rock, to the other local businesses here, to enjoy the ambiance, to enjoy the great service. But if we're cutting labor, if we're cutting people, we're spreading them thin. We're making them tired. We're giving bad service. You're waiting longer on food. Everything is involved. People aren't in business to just break even. They want to make money. And in order to make money, we gotta cut corners. And in order to cut corners, it hurts the customer. So in my opinion, if we can, in this world, I know that wage is going to go up eventually, but to make it so drastic and so quick is just going to make bad business decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Wade Plantey.
Hi, Council. My name is Wade Plant. I live in Lake Stevens, but I own the Subway on Bronson Way. I purchased the Subway in March of 2021, and very excited about the opportunity to own a business. Since I've owned the business, minimum wage has gone up, if this goes through, 40% in just three years. Utilities have gone up 20%. Cost of food has gone up 20%. I am not making any money as it is, and I am wondering if there are provisions for the small businesses that would be bankrupt like me. Because if this initiative goes through, I will be bankrupt day one. I offer my employees a 401K, because even though it is a minimum wage job, I don't wanna treat them like minimum wage people. And so I offer them a 401K so that they can better their life. I offer standing discounts to the City of Renton employees, EMTs, school teachers, Boeing, Pacar, those that are in education. I have standing discounts for them so that they can frequent my store. In the last couple of weeks, sales have been down about $1,000 to $1,500 a week. I'm not even keeping up with my current rent. And so having the minimum wage jump so fast, it is literally bankrupting me. And so I'm just curious if this has worked in other cities where minimum wage has gone up so fast that has proven successful to raise the standard of living for those around? Or if there are other programs that I'm not aware of to help small businesses that are struggling just to keep the doors open? And I'll pose that question if anyone has an answer.
We don't really have dialogue. This is your time to speak to the, to address the council, so.
Okay, well, I would appreciate any emails. I do get the City of Renton emails. So if there is any information that can be provided to small businesses, I would appreciate it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Lydia Mascherina.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for your time again. I am Lydia from the Berliner Pub in downtown Renton. I received this letter from the City of Renton explaining Initiative 2302. And let me summarize the fine print. Employers that do not fall within the large or mid-size employer are not covered by the new minimum wage increases. Great, so if you're a small business, then you're good with what you're doing. But what does Renton consider a small business? 15 people or employees or $2 million in gross revenue? That seemed exceedingly low, so I did some digging. The SBA says that a full-service restaurant that has a gross revenue of less than $11.5 million annually is a small business. That's a national organization. Then I checked with Washington State. They determined a small business is one with less than 50 employees. So what about Seattle, our neighbors? They say a small business employs less than 500 people. So how did the Raise the Wage Rent and Campaign determine their parameters? Where did they get those numbers from? It's not stated on their website. Did they just make it up? Did they just pluck these numbers out of the air? Did they just pluck these numbers out of the air? Was there a dartboard? Um, this ordinance will only affect a handful of the businesses in downtown Renton. Right now, we're all the same. We pay the same wages. If implemented as written, only some of the restaurants will have to pay their staff extra, including franchises. This, uh, we're going to have to pay our staff extra, increase our prices, and the others do not. How does that work? How is that fair? If implemented as is, competition is no longer equal. It actually makes sense for us to earn less money, to close our doors a couple of days a week, reduce our staff to 14 people, and then at least we have an even playing field. You know, when we took over our space, it was a community problem. We fixed it. We made it a family restaurant. When we opened, the police came down, the fire, the council, the mayor Dennis came down, thanked us for opening up. This is what happens when legislation is written by people who don't live here, who don't know what they're talking about, and don't bother to ask the people who do. I urge the council to revisit this legislation and to reclassify the parameters of small, midsize, and large businesses to align with the nation, the state, the neighboring cities, and to make it fair for all businesses in Renton. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, um, Mary, I don't assume you're wanting to speak twice. You're signed up twice. Okay, no worries. Uh, Jeff Smith is up next.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I am also from the Shadowhawk Community, uh, down here in Renton. Also want to speak to the homeless, uh, encampment. We have these people who wander through our property, our community, which, you know, some of them are very nice, very hospitable to interact with. Others, you know, tend to be a little more hostile, and, you know, as Monica stated earlier, some of them, you know, can be scary. She's had a bullet go through her home. Um, I've had one actually go through my home as well. It's been a couple of years back. You know, it's really difficult for us. We are spending a lot of money trying to work with the police department, follow the Renton Police Department's guidance, and, uh, partnering with the BPA to get us the Miami gate, having that installed. Doing our best to call 911 when we see trespassers through the area. You know, just get those more frequent things through there. At the end of the day, you know, that gate was taken down when the fire department was at last. We did at least jury-rig it, for lack of a better phrase, to get it up and sort of slow down the traffic the other day. Since it came down, there's been two pianos that have been dumped back on the property. You know, and between the homeless, the danger, the expense, and then the fact that we've got this property now that we've got to clean up, yeah, it, it's really discouraging to essentially feel like we're following the police department's direction and encouragement, yet we almost seem to be losing our traction as we move forward. So thank you for your time and appreciate the experience of talk tonight.
Thank you very much. All right, that is all of our speakers for tonight, and we have no one signed up, uh, to speak remotely. So we are going to move on to the consent agenda. There are 13 items for council consideration. Are there any, like, pull for separate discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President. Uh, seeing a move that we adopt the consent agenda as published.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved by Council President Prince, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the council adopt the consent agenda as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Albertson.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O. Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee has one report to present.
Hey, Transportation Aviation Committee, Committee Report. It's an appointment to the Airport Advisory Committee. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation uh, to confirm Mayor Pavoni's appointment of Mr. Steven Ratzloff to, uh, the Washington Pilots Association alternate position, uh, with a term expiring May 7th, 2027, to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? All right, motion carries. Uh, we're on to legislation, and we have none, so we're going to go to new business. Council President Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On, uh, Monday, June 10th, at, let's see here, uh, 5:45 PM, the committee hall will be meeting in the conferencing center. We will be discussing the sidewalk survey update. Uh, and then at 7:00 PM, we will have our council meeting, uh, here in the council chambers and by video conference. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June, uh, 10th, at 4:00 PM, the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting in the council conference room, as well as via video conference. There are four items on the agenda. One, continue polling at Senate House Bill 1406, sales tax credit funds with Sauk County housing and homeless partners. Two, comprehensive plan draft elements. Three, code compliance update. And four, emerging issues in city.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
Uh, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Albertson.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. On, uh, Monday, June 10th, at 1:45 PM, the Community Services Committee, Committee, uh, will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. I am pleased to announce that we do not have 14 items on the agenda. Uh, we have three items on the agenda. Number one, repealing RMC 22-2, uh, ordinance 6106, Renton River Days Advisory Board. Uh, number two, Northeast Renton Park Project Update. And number three, emerging issues in parks and recreation. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Uh, we have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember O. Halloran.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I am pleased to announce that I have 14 items on the agenda. Finance likes to stay busy. On Monday, June the 10th, at 2:45 PM, the Finance Committee will be meeting in the council conference room or via video conference. And again, we have 14 items on the agenda. Please bear with me. Uh, number one, agreement with Environmental Science Associates for Critical Areas Ordinance Update. Two, Port of Seattle's Economic Development Support Program Grant. Three, conversion of permit specialist position to planning technical position. Four, request for LTE Construction Engineer Inspector. Five, temporary event permits and venue rental fee waiver requests for the Sky Urban Institute Juneteenth Celebration and the Renton Historical Society Annual Fundraising Gala. Six, request to waive revenue, a venue rental fee for the Project B Free Survivor Wellness Symposium. Seven, youth athletic facility grant to support acquisition of the Stone Way parcel adjacent to the Cedar River Park. Eight, Parks Recreation and Natural Areas Plan Update with Burke Consulting Professional Services Agreement. Nine, IVARS Incorporated Concession Services Addendum Number Two. Ten, excuse me, new lease with Britton Business Ventures Incorporated, Doing Business as Evergreen and Refreshments. Eleven, agreement with McKenzie Engineering Incorporated for the first, for the City Hall First Floor Remodel. Twelve, local agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the South Seventh Street Corridor Improvement Projects. Thirteen, ever-present vouchers. And fourteen, emerging issues in finance, which there shouldn't be any after all. But we'll find out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. That's what happens when you take a vacation. Uh, Councilmember McGurven.
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor, but I am going to be at the Finance Committee meeting.
All right. The end of my sheet. What's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move we adjourn before Finance gets more items on their agenda.
Moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.